Not weeks before we have final answers nationwide.
We're good.
Yeah.
So the Newton.
With us, it's not too bad because he works the mail-in ballots during the course of the day.
Right.
You guys ready?
Yep.
So the Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on Wednesday, October 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. First, I would like to salute the flag. Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you guys hear me and Barbara?
Yes, I can hear you.
I know, again, I can hear you too, Barbara. I'm just wondering if they can hear us.
We can, Mark.
Okay, just a point of correction. You said October 9th. It's November 9th.
Sorry, I apologize. Did I say October 9th? I could have. Thank you, Mark. So we have Mr. Lavoy and Ms. White online, remote tonight, but we have five people in front live. So the first thing on the agenda is the continuation for 125 New Hampshire Corporation of Plastile, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for a forbidding condominium site plan of South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-3. Ms. Roudin, do you have any comments on this?
I mean, as we've talked about before, at this point, you have three choices. You can deny the application, you can accept the continuance request that the applicant has put in, or you can approve it with whatever conditions. I wouldn't recommend approval at this point, but those are your decisions. Just for clarification, I did ask, your letter says for the next planning board meeting. I had a small email exchange with Barry just to confirm that December 9th is actually the meeting date they are requesting, not the 29th that you guys had discussed having a meeting.
Okay, and then... Just for clarification, this is for the parcel, the project to the south, that we have requested a revised existing conditions plan and a few other things. Barry did send over a request for continuation. They're waiting on, I believe, although it's not in this letter, I think he emailed some information from New Hampshire DOT and a few other things, and I'm not sure if the applicant wants to elaborate on that.
So basically, we've had discussions with the DOT, with our district, and it's been favorable, so we're just waiting for the letter. We also had a favorable CBA meeting last. I think we, it's looking fairly good for that, so I think our next meeting, we're up for a vote. And since we have reduced all our variances to only be into the entry roadway, none of the construction of the rest of the parcel, I think that we should be okay. And we built some new buffer zones, and I think we can get this done and leave our lane alone and with the waiver we got from you on the fire lane. So I think the whole package is a complete package. We come back, we submit after CBA at that point, and then there should be no more movement of any, of anything on the plans, and that will be our last redraw with that. And if there was anything that needed to be fixed, we'll fix that, and then we'll come to you, and then we'll work and finish it up.
Okay.
And I think that's the best way, because I think it just saves very much time. I think so. And I think everything you're looking for, I know everything you're looking for will be provided.
And our next hearing is, we do not have one on the 22nd of November, correct?
Right. The next meeting is December 13th.
December 13th.
Right. So it's behind the ZBA. We get going to ZBA in front of it, and then we come back to here.
Okay.
And then hopefully, you know, they should vote, so.
So about a month and a few days out.
Right. So, so I think that's why we were asking if we can continue is to make, it just makes sense at this point where we're at.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? This is Barbara.
Sure.
I'd like to know, this is probably the fourth or fifth continuation, and I know that it's up to the applicant to ask after the 90 days or 60 days, but can the administrative assistant remind me when the last, not certified mailing, but other mailing that went out to tell the abutters that this meeting was continued yet again?
Did you hear that, Jim?
Yes, but that's for the board to decide.
No, she's asking when was the last one.
Oh, when was the last one that was in, for the second meeting in September, I believe?
So it's definitely, should be something sent out to the abutters before this meeting on December 13th, in my opinion.
So re-notify the abutters, but it does not have to be, do you want to clarify?
It does not have to be certified. It could just be first-class mail.
That would go regular mail.
And technically, it is not required. It is a courtesy, so.
Okay.
So I'm going to make a motion that we grant continuance to the December 9th meeting?
13th.
13th.
Yeah, so I apologize. I misspoke when I said the 9th.
December 13th.
December 13th, I'm sorry.
Second.
Do you want to include in that the non-certified notice to go to the abutters?
I would. You good with that?
Yeah.
I think everybody's following along pretty much anyway. I mean, everything's on the town website.
And I know I don't want to mix this, but the ZBA just recently mailed mailers for their hearing, I would expect. But, so the abutters are getting mailings as part of the ZBA, so as part of the continuance for the planning board, although they're two separate items, they're most likely aware.
Well, regardless of what we're doing, what we end up doing, if we need to replenish the NEPR account, please let me know at the meeting before I leave. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Just because of the known level of change that's coming in with this revised application, having more than just the Thursday before the meeting for my review, and I don't want to speak for Mike Vignelli, but I suspect it's similar, if we could have a little bit more time, if you can get them to us as soon as you can, or at least the bulk of it as soon as you can, it allows us to be more timely with our reviews for everything to move forward, so.
So that Thursday, just for clarification, is the 8th of December?
Yeah, if we could have it before then, but if you're missing something, and I know like the drainage report's coming, or you have a piece that you can't get to me quite, get as much to me as quickly as you can, or as soon as you can, it makes it a lot easier for everybody.
Okay, I will let Barry Guy know because he's the one that handles it.
And he certainly knows how to contact me. And if I think something's missing, I'll try to flag it as fast as I can.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Would you like me to call a roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Marant?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
I spelled it correctly. That's unanimous.
So Jim, there was a question asked about the NEPR account, because they'd like to know if they need to put money into that account before then?
I would have to go out back and look at the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Okay, second on the agenda tonight is a continuation of 125 Development, New Hampshire Corporation of Plastile, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for an amended site plan at 3, 5, 7, and 9 Puzzle Lane in Newton, New Hampshire. This property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-4. So the applicant provided a few revised drawings, which are stamped, I believe they're stamped as-built for the parcels referenced that I just referenced. Ms. Roudin has had the opportunity to review that. She provided us a letter last night, I believe, the end of day yesterday, with a couple of potential issues, as well as procedural issues, that in her opinion, we should consider before moving forward with this. Do you want to?
Do you want me to step there?
Yeah.
So the basic is that because this is an amended site plan with the purpose of having what is out there approved, recorded, so that they can move on with the sales of the properties that they're intending to do. So the amended site plan is intended to show an as-built, what is actually out there on the ground, more or less today. So without actually having the town engineer go out with that as-built and confirming everything, I wouldn't recommend you move forward, because you want to know that what is out there is accurate. There are some things that are inconsistent with the current approved site plan versus what is on the ground. Trying to have everything be on the same page, I think you need Mike Vignelli to go out there and review it, similarly to the inspection he did back in September, I think it was mid-September, to write up a letter to identify any issues. And there might not be. There might be. There might be additional information you need because the site has changed in some ways, but you don't know that until he's had the ability to go out and look. That's my main recommendation for not having you accept jurisdiction in my letter. There are a few things that I flagged. Mr. McDonnell just handed out a few things, so I don't know if it's been addressed, but they were just to raise potential issues. So if Mike goes out there and he can take a look, we know what some of the issues could potentially be. And some of the things I've listed may not be a problem, but I'm not on the ground, no one has been on the ground with this new revised plan. The other issue is I just needed confirmation that the southern two smaller buildings, if they intended the original submission to be that as-built, or if that has changed in some way. I just needed confirmation of that from their surveyor. That's the, that's the short version.
Okay. So the circuit rider's recommendation is that we have, and in the past, because I've only been here for a year or so or two in this position, has the planning board conducted a site visit?
You actually can't, on this application, you cannot do a site visit because you have not accepted jurisdiction. If you accept jurisdiction, then you can do a site visit. I don't know that that's necessarily warranted at this point.
Okay.
But that's up to the board. And again, you can't do it unless you accept jurisdiction.
Does anybody?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Barbara.
I would, I would like to request, because those other two buildings are actually on this same piece of property, and we haven't gotten an as-built for those two. We haven't gotten anything since the original, hang on a second. It was in June where the second page, the second page of the plan was showing those other two buildings, and it's all part of that one lot, so I believe that we should probably have an as-built of that portion too.
Okay. I also have a comment. I'm looking at the, the plan for, that was submitted on Thursday, and there's a, according to the legend, a concrete pad, which I don't think is there. That's quite large, on the northwest side that goes over the property line. So I think the plan should be updated. I think it's just a...
This is Barbara again. Could I make a comment on that?
Sure.
There was a notation on Mike Vignelli's report, and he was saying something about making sure nothing went into that 200-foot setback. I don't know whether that potential concrete pad actually infringes on that 200-foot setback or not, so that might be something he needs to check.
I think this is different. I actually... Sorry, go, Jim.
No, I was just, this site, just for the board and anybody who wants, does have variances that were granted for a setback for structural. I have to go back to look at the exact relief, but the buildings themselves do not intrude into the setback. They got zoning relief for them.
And I actually, Jim, do you have the opportunity to bring that figure I shot over this afternoon? I, Barbara, nobody here has seen this, but I...
Not today?
Yeah. Yes, please. I overlaid what was approved with the as-bills this afternoon.
Great, thank you.
And red is the as-built, black and white is what was approved in 2015, and I would agree that the building locations or where they were approved back in 2015 or wherever, it's probably hard to see just because I did it in a couple minutes, but at least in my opinion, the buildings are in the same location. The parking lot configuration has changed slightly. There is, if you zoom away, can I drive that, or no?
Would you like me to enlarge something?
To the plan north, the top of the page, so that as far as my preliminary review, and obviously, the town engineer has not looked at this, but the septic system and the structures are not in the 200-foot setback, and they're within the, on the east side.
Okay, that's great. I couldn't quite tell where the 200 feet was.
And I'm wondering if the north arrow is correct on this drawing that's submitted to us. It's the plan north. They're not, it's not.
If you need it lodged, just let me know.
No, I was trying to orient myself, because the north arrow on the plan is incorrect. So the planned east side of the drawing, the variances are held, or it was, it's the same as what was approved back in 2015. I'm not sure that helps clarify anything, but I think reading the engineer's memo from September, there's generally, I believe he captured most of the inconsistencies or the deviations from what was approved to what's there now. Does anybody else have any, any other comments?
Mr. Chair, do I speak?
Sure. Thank you.
So Mike Vignelli came out, unannounced, unbeknownst to us. Usually, you get notified. Long story short, there's, there's a few things in his report that are inaccurate, too, and as of the paving, the paving, the dimensions of the paving and the parking lot, there's some changes, but we're not, we're not paved any further over, as he claims, because we have done the tape measure on it as far as shots, too. So I don't think they're saying, there's some changes up on the north part of the parking lot, you know, for the fire lane, and I think that's where Ben picked up. We have a future possibility dumpster pad there.
So can we?
Just go down a little bit. We have a future dumpster pad right there at the top of the page.
I'm going to drive right here. Oh, you got him. That was perfect. So just to kind of step through some of the deviations, the red is what was approved, or what was built, and right in here.
Yeah.
The drawing says that this is a paved accessway.
Correct.
And this black drawing is what was approved, the black line.
Correct.
So according to the as-built, you've expanded beyond that, unless the as-built...
In the lower part of the turn, in the lower part of the turn, a little bit right there, maybe like a foot.
Well, the, the, the drawing that was provided to the board is it's 25, 30 feet more than...
Oh, no, it wouldn't be. What we're reviewing is that if you take the line of Building A, the back line of it, that runs west to east, and what it is, is that the septic system, come back up again, the septic system that's sitting in the island, is back in line with, would say the paved area. You see what I'm saying right there?
I, I...
So the parking spaces you're seeing in the triangle, they're not there. It's all the way up tight, because there's, you know, the garage doors coming out of the Turner building. So what I'm saying is that area there is not down. The other area is up.
But I guess what I'm saying is this red line is what the as-built shows that's out there right now. So either the...
Oh, I see what you're saying, that we're not out as far as that red.
Then that, that would mean that the as-built is not accurate.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So his red is not accurate with that.
I'm not sure what is right or what is wrong.
Yeah.
Other than it's not consistent.
Mr. Chair, could I interject something?
Yes, Barbara.
On this, on this plan, the red is where they have built out their parking lot, too. That black line at the angle is what was on the approved plan, because it moved the edge of the parking lot away from the, the wetlands down there and gave room, if you see that squiggly part, that's for snow storage. Right now, they have paved it all the way practically to the edge. Any snow storage, any place they're going to put any snow, is going to go right down into the wetlands, because they've left no margin of land for any of that snow to go onto.
Jim, do you have a?
It's, it's more general than that, that explicit comment, but one of the reasons for having the as-built and then, that was submitted, and then having Mike Vignelli go out, he needs an orientation point. He needs to see where things are to then, to confirm if the rest of the as-built is accurate. That is the reason for him doing the entire site inspection.
Sure.
He might find things are not in conformance with the as-built, or that it's not showing what's on the ground, or that it is showing what's on the ground, and maybe that something got mismeasured.
Right.
That is the entire purpose of having the town engineer go out, is to confirm the accuracy of the as-built.
So I guess...
And any deviations from. That might bring up other issues, but...
I'll guarantee you, we're, it is by the black line. It's not by the red line. It doesn't have that jogged turn, so I didn't, I missed that when I looked at his plan, but...
So that's...
We are by the block line.
That's kind of why, why we want the engineer, now that we...
With Mike, yeah.
To go out there, because if, we, you know, we're looking at this at a pretty high level with not actually going out on site and noticing some pretty significant deviations, Jim.
Yeah, I mean, in all honesty, I hope it is built to the black line, and that's perfect.
We did. It's, we're to the block. I mean, it's built by GPS. I mean, we didn't venture off the, you know, the ridness of the plants is what we're, you know, data collectors into that, so we're, we're not off that line. If he brought that red line out into where he has it, well, that's not where we are. And I missed that looking at the drawing. We fixed much other stuff, but that was the one I missed. That's not even close.
I mean, this is an unusual amended site plan, because you're trying to correct what has already been built.
Right.
Or get everything on the same literal page.
So we need, Jim, do you have a comment?
I just, because it was brought up at the last meeting, the stormwater management areas that are on the northern end of the building, there are two that are no longer, that are not shown. I did research, and those were not meant to be temporary. Those were meant to be permanent.
From DES, or?
No, that would have been part of the town.
One is over here.
Well...
And one is along here.
That's a two-to-one slope, so they could never be installed. I mean, I'm sure Dennis, when you drove behind, they looked at it, it's...
I haven't been there.
Yeah, mathematically, there's no way to do it. I thought they were temporary, though, but if they're not, they're not on the, on the next drawings, so.
So if, if the stormwater basins that were on the original approval were not installed, but clearly there are other detention basins on the site, one of the things Mike can also look at is, is there a need for a revised drainage plan? Or does it, or is it built to a standard that, yeah, what they did build can handle it? That's entirely plausible. So without information on the ground verified as accurate, you can't make those judgment calls of if you need that or not.
Yep.
So with your comments, Jim, I think it's best for the board to reach out to Mike, see what his availability is to go out there. Hopefully, he can get out there in the next week or two, or a week, depending, I have no idea what, how busy he is. Provide comments to the board and the applicant, that then your engineer can, or surveyor.
Surveyor, yeah.
Take a look at and provide a response to comments, and then go from there. And thank you for the list of changes. Obviously, we have an opportunity to take a look at it, but, you know, we're trying to move this forward and close it out as quickly as possible, because I know Mr. Turner...
Was, so was there anything else that was stuck out at you? You just like?
I have, I have a question. How, we would want to check the, the funds to make sure that there's enough to pay the engineer.
I believe there's about 450, no, sorry, 600 and something dollars in there.
If you want, I'll run and check. I can also get, let you know about the other.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, why don't you do that, so we can make sure that gets taken care of tomorrow?
I believe the last meeting on the 25th, you were negative about $464, and you did provide a check for $1,000. I think there's...
I just, look, if you tell me, it gets done.
Oh, you guys are very, very prompt today.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going anywhere. So could you release Mike to let him talk to us again?
So...
Mike Vignelli, because, you know, we, we have a relationship with him, and all of a sudden, they get turned off.
So he, and I'm actually copying on all the emails he sends you.
Okay.
So he doesn't necessarily need to talk to you, and he doesn't get paid to talk to you. I know it's, you're paying him indirectly.
Wow.
But he works for the board.
I understand he does, but what I'm saying to you is that we'd like to, when we go out and do these things, what we'd like to do.
Oh, absolutely. I think...
We bring everything with us while we're doing it. If we got issues, we like to like work it out, you know, or whatever. We have a really good relationship. How many years, Coleman?
12, 10?
Yeah.
12 years. Just more productivity when he comes, when Mike comes out, so we understand his concerns.
And if we get an issue before we get back to the meeting, we'll rectify what we need to do. As I, I'm hoping that we can get this one done in one more meeting. That would be helpful for Mr. Turner.
So I, being in Mike's shoes, I, and he can do whatever he wants, but it's my recommendation that any comments that he puts in writing, and there's a paper trail.
Correct.
Because he could have you dig a basin 500 feet away. I'm just exaggerating this.
I understand this, but you know how this works, right? I mean, I gotta, I gotta...
I personally would not do that.
Okay.
Working for a community.
Okay.
But he can do that.
I do have a recommendation, and I hope that this will help to move all of this along, that if Mike goes out there, and this could be communicated to him, if he sees, say, the need for a revised drainage plan, based on what he sees, and he can put that in his comments letter, and ideally, maybe in the field if he's able to, at least alert the applicant, so that if a revised drainage plan is going to be his recommendation.
Right.
Typically, this board does take his recommendations, that you will know that ahead of time.
Okay.
I, I can't tell you to do it, the board can't tell you ahead of time to do it, but you will at least know that that might be coming.
Right.
So it would at least provide an opportunity ahead of time to maybe tick some of those things off, if, if it's warranted. I'm not saying it is, but...
Previously, in history of the whole project, that's how we've done it with it. We've done a sidewalk with him to understand what he's trying to point out, too, so the letters coming forth, so we can get ready. So, you know, we don't come to the meeting and then do another meeting, because we get it for the meeting. You know, we...
Yep.
We could possibly get in time and get it, provide something in and get it into Jim and get it done. And, you know.
But just, I'm recommending to the board that they...
Yeah.
Ask that of the town engineer, if any recommended further work beyond, you know, revisions to the plan, that he provide that comment.
So quick question. So when Mike sends us the letter, when he goes out and does his site plan and gives us his feedback, do you not get a copy of that?
You, in the past, we don't, we don't always get it.
Okay.
Historically, it's, it's kind of like hit and, hit and miss.
Right.
Or we receive it like...
Think...
Or, or usually, we get it the day of the meeting.
When he sends it to us, he sends it to them.
That's fine, and I think...
I don't need to see it before them or whatever, but at the same time, it's fine.
As far as I'm aware... As far as I'm aware, and I could be wrong, that most of the time, your engineer or surveyor at the time gets copied. I know Mr. Casey, we got last, I think it was Jen's letter, she sent that last night, he was, Mr. Casey was copied, and then I also forwarded it off to Mr. Coleman about an hour later.
Right.
Just so you had it.
Right. So this round, we were trying to get Mike come out before this meeting, is what we were trying to do, but he wouldn't do it.
He's not going to unless we tell him to.
I understand that, because, you know, where it's at, but...
And we don't have the funds necessarily to pay him, and we didn't know where we were.
We're more than happy to pay for it, you know? If that makes sense. We'll replenish the fund, we'll fill the fund up.
Right, but we, as a board, didn't have the opportunity to meet. We got the information on Thursday. We didn't know if he needed to be out there today, and I have no idea if he has the availability. I mean, that gives him three business days.
Okay.
Fairly quick turnaround.
You know where I'm coming from.
But, oh, I understand that. I think if it wasn't three days, and it was two weeks, we probably would have done something a little bit different.
We got a lot of time for the next meeting.
We have an entire month, and I think he could hopefully get out there.
Right.
So I'm going to make a motion, and I'm going to put these two conditions, that there's enough money in the NEPR account to pay for Mike McNally to go do what he needs to do. And the second condition is that when he issues his copy of his report, that one gets sent immediately to these gentlemen, so that they have the opportunity to address any issues that arise in it before they come to see us at, hopefully, the next meeting, if Mike can...
They need to request to continue the case.
Right.
Oh, okay. I request to continue it, please.
Okay, so that'll come up in my thing, but those are the conditions that I'm putting on it. So the motion is going to be to grant the continuation and to ask Mr. McNally to go out and confirm what we need for information, what's on the ground, so that we can get this project moving along.
I have a question. If Mr. McNally is not available...
Vignelli.
Vignelli is not available prior to the hearing, for whatever reason, do we have a backup plan so they're not stuck waiting?
You, I believe, and Jen, please correct me, do you guys contract with KV Partners? Mike is just the engine, I mean, he's one of the owners that has worked with Newton, but they have other engineers on staff, so I think that that would relieve that.
Their engineering firm?
Yep.
We can put him instead of just his name?
Mike, well, yeah, KV Partners would be, but Mike's done the whole project himself, personally.
And I would suspect he would be able to.
Yes.
Right.
I spoke with him this afternoon, so he's said it's about four or five hours of his time to come out here, write the report.
Right.
So to give you an idea of budgets, Jen, there may be enough money. We may be a little shy in the NEPR account.
Well, if not, we'll replenish it tomorrow.
Yeah, and to put a date on it, we'll put it on for the next meeting, which will be December...
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, so I don't say the wrong one again.
I'll second that.
Mr. Marshon, and then Annie, second.
Can we open up for a public comment before we vote?
I just wanted to let Mr. Marshon know. As soon as I get a report, it usually goes to all of you, the engineer for the project, for the applicant, and to Ms. Roudin. So I'll just...
Can I request that go to applicant too, because Guyer's pretty busy?
So when you...
No, this would go to Mr. Casey.
Oh, well, either way, we'd like to get one to us.
So when you send it to them?
I'll send it to Mr. Lock.
Right. Ask them for confirmation that they received it, please.
I'm not putting that in the...
That we're there, we make sure that nothing didn't get delivered.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Barbara.
Could I ask too, if they're going to redo, if they're going to redo this as-built, instead of just nine puzzle lane, could they put 14-1-27-4 on this plan, please?
Thank you, Barbara.
Do you want me to...
Thank you.
Email that, and the north arrows are conflicting, so I'm just...
I already got that. It's in my notes.
Was that an addendum to the motion?
If that's the easiest way of putting it.
The motion's going to take two pages, as is. However, I believe that those are sort of conditions to the motion for continuance.
A roll call, sorry, Jim.
I think Mr. Piper wanted to talk.
Oh, I was looking to see if we could do public comment before we voted.
So technically, you have not accepted jurisdiction, so you don't have to allow public comment. I mean, obviously, you have the ability to allow the public to speak if you'd like.
Sure. I'm totally happy. We have two people online and a gentleman in the audience.
It's Mr. Turner, so. Will Turner, famous.
With nobody's hands raised, I guess.
Mr. Hamel?
I think it's pretty cut and dry. I think we're done. Couple lies moving, and one...
Yeah, I have no comments.
Okay.
I do not know Ms. Jeffries.
She's from Plasdo. Yeah, Plasdo.
Okay. Do you have any more comments?
Nope.
Now I'm ready for a roll call.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
He said aye. It was very quiet.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So if Jim Kalos knows how much we owe, that'd be great.
We will get back to you, but I think you're, oh, the balances, Jim.
Yes.
Actually, the balance for this account is $527.18.
Need to top it up?
Probably not. We were right on the verge.
So just, I also charge the town for my time, not that it's nearly as much as Mike would require, but...
So we probably should...
Just based on the previous expenses for Mr. Vignelli to come out, that needs to be at least $1,000 to cover him. And that's still, that will drop it down. There's still recording, recording of the new condo docs, three sheets, three sheets of plan sets to record.
So a thousand...
Probably, you're looking at about another, between Mr. Vignelli, Circuit Rider, and others, probably at least 1,000 added.
So if we, does that include all the recordings and everything, or?
1,500 should cover Mike Vignelli.
Okay, I'm just trying to not tie up additional money, so we should...
Okay.
Could we request an additional $1,000?
A thousand, I just remembered, you're also, for this one.
Can we do this? I know Jim's working tomorrow. Could you spend the time in the office, and the email's in the amount, and we'll get it over to you?
Yeah, that, but...
Right, for everything that's needed. You can communicate with us on that, and we'll bring it over.
I'm saying that it should be about $1,000.
Okay, well, we'll bring you $1,000 tomorrow then.
Okay.
Fine enough.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Okay, good.
That was for, sorry, lots 27-4.
Correct.
Did you get 27-3?
27-3 still has $2,125 in that.
So we're good.
Yep.
And that posting is going to be just under $100.
So I think we're fine. Okay, I think we're done.
I have one very small, small item. There's a box in the northwest corner of the sheet with the larger buildings.
Yep.
Have no idea what it is. It might just be a stray box.
It's right there.
Yeah.
It's a stray box.
I have no idea what that is either.
Nor do I. I don't think there's anything there from any aerial shot I've seen, but just as part of the next revision, cleaning that up.
I'll ask and see what that's all about.
It's over the property line, too, so I don't, I don't think it's there.
It's on another piece that we actually own, but it's a residential part, isn't that it?
It says the town of Newton.
Yeah.
Town of Newton. We didn't give it back yet. I'm pretty sure Coleman owns it.
Just something to clean up.
That said, one of the last comments, excuse me, Tom, one of the last comments was on the bank's attorney has said that she feels that the residential piece that got put in with the total parcel is infecting the project, and if that is the case, we're going to take out the residential piece, which...
I totally lost you.
I think Jen's...
The residential piece is not in front of the planning board. That's in front of the ZBA.
Are you talking about the residential portion of Lot 27-4?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, so are you saying that you'd want to subdivide that off?
We're just going to take it off the plan, because, because the bank's attorney feels that we might have to go in...
You mean you're going to take the zoning line off of the plan?
The actual, the actual residential piece of land that we...
That piece is attached toward this property right now.
So it's a long...
We're giving it away until the prop to that end of it.
So just to be clear, this parcel is a whole parcel. I understand there is residentially zoned on this parcel.
There is one long sliver of residential.
But it's not its own parcel. It's attached...
Correct.
To Lot 20. So you can't just take it away. If you wanted to subdivide it off, that's a whole other application, and we can talk about that. But you can't just take it away from this project. I mean, if there needs clarification, a bank needs that, I mean, the buildings are commercial buildings on the commercial portion. Yes, part of it is zoned residential. If that needs clarification, that's something we can certainly put into a letter if that is helpful, but you, you can't just take it off of the parcel without some additional...
So maybe the bank's...
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
I think the bank might be a little confused as to what that means.
One second, Mr. Hamel.
I'm running the cursor over the area. This is the part that is residential.
It's a portion of your parcel is zoned residential. It's not a separate parcel.
Correct. And it can't become a separate parcel unless you subdivide the land, and that has a whole lot of other hoops just because of the orientation, but...
A little better should be enough. I mean, we're not, we don't want to separate. We want to just leave it the way it is.
I would imagine so, yeah.
It's not usable for him.
Yeah.
But the bank's attorney thought that there may have to be a variance.
I think you've already gone through that, if you did.
Phil Perry didn't think so either, but...
Yeah, I don't, I mean, could you, in theory, potentially put residential there? I mean, anything's possible, but it doesn't seem very likely, and just because it's zoned residential doesn't mean it wouldn't have to go through an approval process. So I don't think that that should be, from your bank's perspective, or Mr. Turner, that should be a non-issue, quite frankly.
Mr. Perry's not...
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I can bring some light to this.
Okay.
Basically, that residential area doesn't exist. The zoning on that parcel was changed at least 10 years ago, when we went away from a zoning map and went to describing the zones in the, in the zoning ordinance. So in the appendix to the zoning ordinance, that is the official zoning for that parcel, and the entire 27-4 is in the light industrial commercial.
Okay.
So basically, that, the border of the residential to the light industrial is the property line, not 100 or 150 feet inside of that line. Basically, that line should be taken off the plan, because that is not the zone line.
That would make sense to me. That's probably an old archaic GIS line that somebody drew years ago, so that may be...
The zoning ordinance is very clear that the entire 27-4 is in the light industrial commercial zone.
Yeah, I do agree with Roger.
So with that being said, the town would be more than willing to supply a letter to explain to the bank what happened and took place, and that that is now a piece of commercial.
I think the bank would just look at the assessor card and...
Yep.
I think you could actually also take it off of the plan set.
That would be the easiest thing to do.
But to answer your question, it's not affecting our review.
Yeah.
Right.
So you're good.
It was just the two lawyers going back and forth, and they were kind of, the bank's attorney would thought that there might be a variance, but that sheds more light on...
Okay, they probably said you may need a variance, and you may want to check.
Yes, they don't.
But, no, as far as, yeah.
And Phil Perry thought the same, but if we needed to go for variance, we're just going to take it out of the plan.
You do not, based on what is... Yeah, that is not necessary for this.
So at least we resolved something tonight.
There you go. There you go. Awesome. Okay, well, thank you very much, board, tonight. Appreciate all the work.
Very much.
I'm going to give this to you for the website.
Next on the agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes from the October 25th, 2022 meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, Mr. Turner.
Did you get that, Jim?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
So I have NEPR manifest on the agenda, but I don't have one... There's none.
The only NEPR I had was a bill for $8.62 and can wait until the next.
Let's wait.
Okay.
Update on the capital improvement plan.
Well, that would be Mark, if he's ready to do that, because he's chair.
Yeah, I can, can you guys hear me?
Much better now.
Okay, cool. I'm holding it literally, like, against my face. Okay. So we had a great meeting the other night. Mark Andrews, who's our new town administrator, is proactively chasing all of the department heads for updates to the CIP, which is fantastic, and collaborating with them on sort of what their needs need to be over a longer period of time. So we're waiting on updates from him. Other than that, I think that we were just trying to get aligned on chapters that we need to start working on in 2023, so we have work coming up for that, and work to come. Annie, did I miss anything?
I think, I think you really, you hit it. I'd like to emphasize to the planning board, you know, some of the, some of the principles that we reviewed with Mark and with Tricia McCarthy about the CIP, and that being that we're kind of looking for A, B, C, D as far as priority things, that we want the different boards and committees and groups in town to work together in a way to not have multimillion-dollar projects in one year or two years, but to spread out and to make a plan that's affordable and sustainable and possible for the town. And we asked them to address, one, needs, two, look at the vision statement of the town, of the town people, of what they want to see in the town and what they feel is important, so to do that. So I just wanted to emphasize that those were really part of the conversation and what we want to try and bring in a finished CIP to the planning board and to the public.
Yeah, great point. I think we were looking for one update tonight from Ms. Roudin. Yeah, great point. Um, I think we were looking for one update tonight from Ms. Rowden, uh, just about the land use survey. Uh, wanted to see if there's been any progress on that.
Sure. Um, with that, can I share my screen, Jim? It'll just be easier. Can you change it so I can share my screen?
Oh, sure.
All right. Um, so for folks on Zoom in here, so the land use survey got launched last Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday. Um, I did post it on a couple of the unofficial Newton Facebook pages. It's up on the website in multiple places. Um, I've given you all some postcard sized flyers if you want to hand them out to your neighbors. Um, and Jim has a couple of flyers. I can email that around again. I did with my initial announcement to everybody. So far, we only have admittedly 23 people that have taken it, but we've gotten some good comments. Um, I do need to send out an email to everyone who took the original master plan survey, so that'll definitely bump it up more. Honestly, the election probably drowned it out a little bit, so I'm gonna do another bombardment tomorrow. So we're not gonna get as many as we got for the original master plan survey. It's just, it's topic specific. But if we can get 100 or 200, I think that would be more people then would show up to a meeting. So we'll do another blast. We'll see how we are doing. Um, the plan was really to at least leave it up through the 18th approximately. If we want to leave it up through the week of Thanksgiving or the end of the month, we can. Um, I wouldn't go much beyond that because it'll be diminishing returns, but I can do a couple more of the social media blasts.
So I didn't see one of them. Maybe I wasn't paying attention. I'm not blaming you, but...
It did go out on the town email too, to the people who were on the town email list because I got it that way.
Oh, okay, great.
And I think that's a good way to do it.
I did see it on the one Facebook group that I belong to.
I probably shut it down because of the, the voting.
Honestly, I kinda trolled through your unofficial Facebook pages just to see how buried it got. And it was, it was down the line. There were a lot of people that had a lot to say recently, so...
Are you putting an article in the Carrot Show News at all?
I'm not. We've found, we've found that putting stuff in the paper doesn't really get a whole lot. I mean, I'm certainly happy to send the link in a couple of blurbs if someone has a better contact, but we've never had really good luck with that.
I find, my guess is that the people that are reading the paper probably aren't going to go log in.
Yeah, they just buzz by.
Maybe I'm totally wrong.
I don't, I, I disagree. I find that, you know, people do pay attention to the paper.
I, I read the paper, but I don't know if I'd actually go log in after reading the paper.
Right. You may be right.
Yeah, they're more wrapped if they're on their device already to just hit, uh, hit it and go into it.
So one of the things we are able to track, and I do this with a lot of the surveys, is where we get our traction from with participants. And you can see referral traffic. Newton is on here. Looks like someone actually got it via email. And the rest is social media. So I can also tag the fire department that has a fairly good Twitter following.
I think our friends in blue over there have a decent group of people.
So Jim, what social media accounts have you, have you used for Newton? Just, there are tons of them, so...
Uh, I used Friends of Newton...
What?
Friends of Newton community page. I think that's the title of one. And there's another one that's...
A truly...
A truly community page?
Yeah, and I've heard rumors there is a third page, but I don't have access to that one.
Okay, there's, uh, you know, Voters of Newton. Have you...
That one I have not used.
Okay.
I just posted all three of them, so...
You did?
Yep.
Um, yeah, and I'll send out the blast and the little photo that goes with it again, so that if you want to put it on your own pages, if you're comfortable doing that, cool. Um, the only thing I would recommend is don't engage in conversation about this as a topic on social media or really any planning board matters ever. But that's my one caution for you guys posting in that way. But please hand out or talk to people and just say, oh yeah, it's on the website. Because you're really good messengers too.
Mr. Chairman, tomorrow when I'm in the office, I can make an 11 by 17 version of this and post it downstairs in the hallway and I'll see if I can produce, reduce it so it's a quarter sheet. And I might be able to get the town clerk tax collector to let me put them sort of on our counter.
Um, I will say that if you make it go less than half a page, the font is too small for people.
I think if you just, just put the QR code on it. Put the QR code. Some people get bored when they're waiting.
Well, that, that's the, that was, the thing is, is that if they can walk past it and hit it with their, with their phones, I'm just not, now that I know that reducing its size probably reduces the QR code to a little black.
I mean, I can, I can give you a reformatted flyer for ease, if that's easier.
Greatly appreciated.
That would be great.
Next is, sorry, moving along quickly unless anybody has any other...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Uh, I was just gonna move next, to the next item on the agenda, um, unless we have any more discussion. Do you have any?
Well, it's, this is related to the next thing on the agenda.
Perfect.
Which is the housing grants. Um, so RPC has put together the scopes of work for a lot of the municipalities we're working with. For you, we've put together for doing the housing chapter for the master plan and then also doing a housing audit as part of what we discussed at the last meeting. We'll be looking into doing the final presentation for you on the scope work so that you can apply. Because technically the town has to apply. We can't do it for you, but I'll put it fully together for you. For about mid-December, um, the awards, we've been told, are being given out within 30 days. But we would look to start in approximately February, March, um, to start doing the work on the master plan itself. Probably just beginning with some of the background data because that's about when it will become available. And then any, you've got a town meeting that tends to take up a lot of volume and work for a lot of towns, so really starting to work on the language of it the second half of March. So... But again, there's no match for the grant, so it's a great opportunity to get part of the master plan. You were already sort of in momentum to do. So it kind of fits nicely with the work you had already been doing.
So when will we be getting that from you?
So I would like it for your December meeting to be going through the scope, which I do realize that December 13th is going to be a potentially very long meeting, but I'll, I'll get it to you so we can hopefully be quick on dealing with it. If it needed to get kicked to later in December, that's okay too.
Okay, and that's a good segue into the last item is next meeting dates. Looks like we do not have one, another meeting in November.
Correct.
We are scheduled for the 13th of December.
Correct.
Perfect.
The 13th and...
The 27th.
Yep.
Correct.
27th of December?
Yep. Perfect. Any other items?
Are people able to make the 27th?
I will be remote for both of those.
That still works.
I will probably be there.
Just, we do need to make sure we have a quorum though.
Right.
Physical quorum.
Mr. Lavoy may be traveling. He may be home. And, and...
I'll be around. I'll be home on vacation.
I'll be here. I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Barbara said she'll be here, so we got a quorum. We're good.
She'll, she'll be here on...
No, no, that was me.
I'll be on Zoom. Yeah.
I said I'll be here.
Oh, Mark said he'll be here. I know somebody did.
I know Barbara and I have very similar voices.
Only when your mics are muffled and I can barely hear you.
Okay, so those, it looks like...
I do have a question before we end, a, a, a request before we end this meeting.
Yep.
That maybe, uh, emailed from you, Dennis would be, to the applicant, would be good to remind him that he should not be handing out new information at a meeting if he has, because the board is not going to review it then. That's never been the case to accept stuff at a meeting. And if he has a packet of information, he should be giving it to the administrative assistant so that he can distribute it to the members with the rest of their packets. He's done this, he did it the last meeting too, and that's really not appropriate for him to do it.
I will do that. That's a good point. Thank you, Barbara. I...
Thank you.
Yeah, I did not look at it and, um, I'm sure Jim can provide a copy for the file.
Uh, actually, luckily, Ms. Rowden gave me hers. I, they gave me no paperwork.
I would recommend it get scanned and just posted on the website with all the other material.
I think the first page is what's most useful for us.
I haven't honestly even looked at it.
I just flipped through it when we were dealing with other business, but I will do that as well. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
So looking to adjourn this meeting at...
Uh, one, one thing. I need to know, and because I work on it with a schedule for things like public notices and what have you, if there, there was a citizen petition that had to be corrected, citizen petitions can start to be received as of the 14th of November.
Okay.
They have to be completed. I gave you, everybody, a couple of weeks ago, actually, sorry, a couple of meetings ago, a list of the dates. I'd like to be able to work it in so that any of the master plan chapter, public hearings, if we can sort of lump everything together, it will save the, the board money in its budget. I am working presently on, it's just a couple of updates for the policies and procedures manual. And it's turning into not quite a rewrite, but there are, but, there are a group of things that went into the rules of procedure that now need to go into the policies and procedures manual. That probably should have at least a public hearing before it's adopted. And I'm just, I'm trying to get everything sort of together so that we, I mean, the budget's in very good shape for the planning board, but I don't see a reason to waste money.
So based on the citizens petition hearing that has to happen.
Right.
The, if you go to adopt the land use chapter, um, that would have to happen. And the policies and procedures, you might want to do that, plan for that at your December 27th meeting just because the 13th is gonna be fairly packed at this point, um, potentially, so...
You can also go into, I believe...
You can go into January.
I believe January 11th is the last date to have the public hearing. Thing is, is that if you're gonna change anything after the public hearing, you have to have a second public hearing. And there's not enough time, so just if you don't mind, I can set things so that December 27th will be your public hearing night for those items.
So you're still gonna have to vote to move things to public hearing. The citizens petition you have to have the public hearing for. But you would have to vote to move those things to public hearing, and I don't think you're prepared to do that, at least with the master plan chapter.
Okay. I just, I, I wanted to find out how close things were so that somebody didn't, you know, suddenly at a meeting go, let's take this to the public hearing, and I go, uh, no, it takes three weeks.
So let me, let me say, the land use chapter is probably gonna be appropriate for the 27th. The CIP is not.
Okay.
That's, that's, um, being worked on. The, the departments and people in town are so used to, since, since we pulled back on doing any kind of maintenance after the last recession in, you know, 2007 and so forth, they're, they're so used to desperately planning a year or two that getting rethinking about longer term planning is just, it's like a whole new way of looking at things. So we're having a little bit of a, a culture shift that is needed and good and, but it takes a little bit more time.
Yeah, and from what I was told, the, the mentality is a lot of them are having a hard time trying to envision that five to seven year plan to where they just keep wanting to come up with things that they would normally just put in the budget instead of something that belongs in a capital improvement plan.
Yep. Good point.
So I will try to complete the rewrite of the policies and procedure manual in time so that it gets out to everybody. You give input and on the 13th, if you guys say yes, I can literally, I'll have the ad ready to, to submit to the paper. It's literally, it's cutting things that close. So...
Sounds good.
And one final thing, at the last meeting, you waived a lot line adjustment in the policies and procedure manual. I'm removing that from requiring a public hearing. It still requires to be discussed and voted upon at a public meeting, but not at a public hearing.
Yep.
And for January, just throwing this out there for you people to think about. They changed the law on what we required to do on notice. It was always notice with proof of receipt. It is now being changed, it has been changed to proof of, of mailing.
It's like Massachusetts.
So I'm proposing that starting January 1st, I no longer do return receipt cards, which will also save the applicant, it's like $3.15 per envelope.
And saves a significant amount of time for you.
I, yes, but I can't say that too smilingly.
Yes, you can.
And I have one other thing that I'd like to bring up and get Jen's input on real quick. I brought this up before a lot of you were on the board when our other, um, chairperson was in charge. And that was with the town and the cisterns, right, for our firefighters to be able to be putting out the fires and stuff. We have an issue with a bunch of them in town to where they haven't been maintained and properly taken care of and stuff. And I had brought up the fact that maybe we could, with the new, um, site plans and stuff that are coming up, especially with the commercial plans, have them contribute into a town fund to be able to, um, pay for the upkeep and maintenance of these cisterns to be able to do, um, in case a fire broke out where they are, like they get installed up in there and stuff, but also on the town property in the areas surrounding so that it would help the town out immensely.
So with anything coming forward as new, you can certainly have it set up so that, um, the town can have an easement, that the property owner has to. If it's for a individual property that they have to maintain it, that, that's part of your current stormwater regulations. If it's for a subdivision, it's actually easier if the town is deeded that property so that they have the complete rights to go in and do whatever maintenance needs to happen. Um, that can make that easier. To require a, an ongoing fee is difficult as far as an off-site mitigation fee. You could do an impact fee.
Yeah, an impact fee is what I'm...
But impact fees to establish them, you have to show that there is growth that is causing the necessity for that, in that case, a cistern. It might not be quite as difficult because the subdivision is growth, but it, it's very hard to prove that you have to have that cistern maintenance based on that growth. And you have to also have a study established before you can come up with the exact fee. And just doing that study is, depending, can be $10,000. And there aren't a lot of people that do it.
Yeah.
So...
Doesn't work from my experience on the private side.
Okay.
Unfortunately, most developers and consultants argue that it's... Most, unfortunately, most developers and consultants argue that it's not, they're not providing a, a need for that cistern or whatever.
It's a hard thing to prove. Many towns are actually getting rid of their impact fees because it's, they're basically just taking money in and giving it back because they can't prove that the requirement is based on growth. In some cases, you certainly could do an off-site mitigation fee if there's something in there. It would be a little tricky with a cistern. But establishing the town's ability to deal with cisterns on subdivisions, that's very easy and you already have the regulations on the books to deal with that.
And we could do bonds for maintenance.
For initial, yes, before you would take over the road if it was going to be a public road. Yep.
Okay. I wasn't sure. That's why I wanted to get some info.
No, it's, it's a great thought. Going back is a little difficult. Going forward, much easier.
Right. Well, that's what we'd be looking to do is going forward.
Yep.
I do have a file in the back room. I started two and a half years ago trying to find the deeds and what have you to all the cisterns and standpipes and what have you in town. Regretfully, too much of this stuff comes up. And it's one of those things that once you start, you could spend an entire day just tracking one item down.
Right.
Does...
All right. Well, thank you all for your input.
I have a question for clarification because maybe I'm just ignorant on this. You're saying cistern. Do you mean fire pond?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because we have a few cisterns, we have a few fire ponds, and then we have, like, on my lot, I have an easement for fire access because there's a swamp out back.
All right.
Right.
Thank you.
But some of them, where they have them, they have a cistern hooked up right there so they can just hook the hose up and they don't have to throw in the, the line with the, the screen piece at the end of it to suck it out.
Okay, those are usually referred to as standpipes.
Yep.
So we have, but we do actually have cisterns
Right.
that may or may not belong to the town of Newton and may or may not have ever actually been put in.
I will say that's a whole other matter.
Yeah, that's another bowl of...
Yeah, that's a kettle of worms, a can of worms you don't want to really kick.
I was going to say a can of SpaghettiOs, but... All right, so we good?
We are good at, I will say, 8:13.
Can I get an amen? Amen.
Thank you, Barbara.